Thank you, Mr. Stephanie Anthony.
Oh, no, no problem. Shall we? We're ready.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Fortuna Planning Commission. Can you please stand and join me in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, do we have an approval of minutes from last week?
I move to approve the minutes from our last meeting of November 12th. Can that happen in our last meeting? Yeah, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So, we really have two periods that are open for public comment. One is before the meeting and then one is at each particular agenda item that we discuss. Please, please limit yourselves to three minutes per speaker. Be advised that by law we are unable to deliberate or take action on issues presented during that public comment as they're not on the published agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Carter.
This is where you get up and give your speech.
Oh, come on.
Cut it.
All right, would you like to speak? No? Okay. Okay. Motion to close public comments, please.
Motion to close public comment?
Right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you. So, now, we've got a couple of items of business tonight. First is a public hearing to consider a recommendation city council approve a tentative map to subdivide 1.57 acre lot into six multifamily lots ranging in size from 10,000 square feet to 13,197 and then associated with that a conditional use permit for 36 multifamily units and a waiver of the minimum lot depth. The applicant is Will Adams and this is on the southeast side of Smith Lane between Fortuna Boulevard and Ronerville Road. Liz, what did you have?
Yeah, thank you Chairman Rogers and Planning Commission. So, yeah, this is a proposal to subdivide a 1.57 acre parcel into six multifamily lots which would then each be developed with a six-plex. The location is on the overhead there, so it is located on the south or the southeast side of Smith Lane, generally between Ronerville Road on the north and here's the project site on the south or the east side. And then Fortuna Boulevard is just off the map here. So, you can see it is a vacant parcel. There aren't any structures. There aren't any unique environmental or any other natural resources on the site. It is in an area, it's zoned residential multifamily and you can see that there are multifamily developments basically actually surrounding it on all sides. So, it is in an area appropriate for the proposal. And this is the tentative map. So, this is the 1.57 acre parcel. Smith Lane is on the left here. And you can see the proposal is for an access road through the site and then each parcel, so the line through the middle is a property line and then the six parcels are basically squares or rectangles. And you can see that each multifamily building is on each of those parcels and then the parking is along the road and each of the buildings does have the required 40% open space. And, let's see. This is a close-up of the tentative map, so we can, it's a little bit blurry. It didn't come out quite as clear as I would have liked. So, again, you can see the property lines a little bit better on here in the buildings and we've got the elevations, preliminary elevation. So, the preliminary elevations were supplied to you not as a formal design review but as a conceptual so that you could see what the ultimate intention is and it kind of helps you make your decision, I think, on or get a sense for, you know, how it's going to look. So, let's see, we've got, so each building will have six units. They're two-story buildings, three units on the bottom and three units on the top, two bedroom units and four single bedroom units. And parking, there are nine parking spaces for each unit, for each building.
Wow.
And that is 54 spaces overall and the parking is provided at the rate required by the Fortuna zoning code. That's two parking spaces for every two-bedroom unit and one parking space for each one-bedroom unit. So, it does meet the code. The code also requires covered parking. That can be with carports or garages and also allows, instead of covered parking, it allows that each unit have an externally accessed storage facility. So, those are provided on the sides of the buildings and those show up on the elevations that you'll be looking at. Trash enclosures on each of the, each lot has its individual trash enclosure. And then the road through the lot will need to be on a shared easement. So, that's a requirement of the subdivision that that easement be created. And any other, some utility easements that are required. So, let's see. Basically, the utilities are installed in Smith Lane adequate to serve the site. I noticed that the Public Works Department did require sewer study and a storm drain study. It's expected that those facilities will meet the needs of this project because they were designed for the, for the recent multifamily developments both on Smith Lane to the northwest and then also off to the, I think it's to the east or the southeast. The Newburgh Court multifamily developments do use, they did install a storm drain through this parcel and then connecting to Smith Lane to the north. So, that was, you know, fairly recent, about, I think, eight years ago and that was sized for the ultimate build-out of this area. And actually, I'll just mention it now, there is a letter in your packet from one of the neighbors regarding storm, you know, concerns about storm drainage runoff. And I did want to point that out that I can go back a couple of slides. That letter is from a resident or a manager of this apartment building right at the bend in Smith Lane. And so, the storm drainage is, even though the topography actually would flow to the south, but, but the storm drain system is actually to the north and you can see the storm drain on the tentative map. It does go to the north. And that is that upgraded storm drainage, storm drain line that I, that I mentioned. So, it connects in at Stockton Court. So, you know, both of these two developments, the one at Stockton Court and the one to the, let's see, where is it? That would be, I'm not sure exactly where it picks up, but this, this all drains into this, oh, it was the Fitzy. That's what that is. That's the, is it the wagon wheel? I was gonna say, I was gonna say horseshoe. It's the wagon wheel. So, yeah, it picks up the storm drain that way. So, the storm drainage won't be going to that, to that corner in Smith Lane. There will be onsite, just to get the surface water runoff, there will be onsite infiltration basins. And then other runoff from that site will go into the road. So, it's gonna, you know, the runoff is gonna be directed into the new access road and then it'll be picked up by the existing storm drain inlet that's in Smith Lane. You can see that on our tentative map as well. So, we'll go back to the tentative map here. Again, the zoning district is residential multifamily. The project meets the standards of the zoning code. There is a conditional use permit. So, your, your resolution, you would have two resolutions before you. One is for the tentative map. That's the first motion, P. 2019-3026. And then there's also a conditional use permit that is required for this level of a multifamily. So, the Fortuna Municipal Code allows as a principally permitted use up to five units on a parcel. So, here we have six units per parcel. So, that bumps it up into requiring, requirement of a conditional use permit and that is attached. And the use permit would also allow a waiver of the lot dimensions. And of course, that was something that was passed recently by the Planning Commission and then the City Council. The zoning, the lot depth, the minimum lot depth is three times the lot width. So, for a normal development, that would, you would have a minimum width of 80 feet and then the three times the lot depth would be up to, or a minimum of 240 feet. But in this case, the lot widths are measured along the frontage here and those are around 97 feet to 126 feet. So, the lot, three times that depth would be about approximately, you know, up to 300 feet or so for a minimum. So, the waiver allows, I don't have my, the actual dimensions and I can't quite see them on this map, but you can see that, I think they're about, they're approximately 100 feet and then you have about 100 feet this way. So, that waiver allows a smaller depth on, on these parcels. And it makes sense because I think, you know, overall, this, this is the, the lot width is along the frontage and this is really effectively the depth. But then with, with the configuration of the six lots within the interior of the parcel, you really don't need that, you know, deeper lot because you've got your depth, the functioning depth in this direction. So, I think in that sense that waiver makes, does make sense for this project. Let's see. Oh, so I will move on to the elevations. And you can see, you know, the two-story with the hip roof and then the sort of gables along, kind of breaking up the mass of the roof and then the different use of siding. There's the horizontal hardy siding along the lower, the first floor and the second floor has shiplap, is it, no, it's board and bat siding. And then shingles in the, in the gable sections. Let's see, this is the entry. Is that the entry? Yeah, there's an entryway providing access to all three of the first floor and then stair access to the three units on the second floor. Each unit has, on the ground floor, there are outdoor patio areas, private patio areas, and then the upper floors have decks. So, and then keep in mind, this is a preliminary. So, the formal design review would come back to the Planning Commission and that is a condition of approval. So, that's a requirement before the building permit can be issued. And then these are the floor, floor plans. So, this is the first floor. We can see the entryway here and the doors into those first floor units and the private outdoor space. And you can see the overhang around the building including over the outdoor storage areas and including overhangs over the outdoor porch areas, patio areas. And the second floor is similar. You can see the entryways on the second floor and then the deck areas. Let's see, I think that's all I have. So, I will, a couple of things on the conditions of approval. So, the subdivision itself is contingent on getting that use permit and then of course getting, having the, this will go to the City Council. So, the subdivision is a recommendation to the council because it's a major subdivision. CCNRs will be required for maintenance of the roadway and any other common area. Actually, I think that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
That was very thorough. Honestly, all of my questions you answered in your presentation.
Oh, glad to help.
Thank you.
And so, am I to understand that there will be no on-street parking?
So, the onsite, the onsite parking meets the requirements of the zoning code for minimum parking and then the street parking is just treated as overflow. So, any required parking cannot be met by the street. So, you're right. I think that answers it. I think that's what you're asking.
And there, and no vehicles with, inside of where the developments, where the buildings are that aren't parked in designated spots?
So, all of the parking, this is the only parking for each unit. So, it's, it's shown. So, there won't be any parking anywhere else. There aren't any garages here. So, it's, it's really just, these are the units, nine units for each building. There is some street frontage. I don't believe there's, there aren't any no parking areas on Smith Lane. So, there, you know, overflow parking could be accommodated there.
That's, that's not my, my concern is not to have cars parked on the inside that aren't in designated parking areas.
Right. I don't think there's any room to park anywhere.
And isn't there a requirement for certain landscaping around especially multifamily sites like this that would pick up some of that space as well?
Yeah, all of the, will be landscaped.
Right, which will, would come back to us during the designer's phase. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I would think it's kind of interesting to see the street situation because Smith Lane is multifamily. So, all of these units, all of these developments basically have the same situation going on here where they have, you know, limited number of parking on the site itself and there is some street parking. And you can see, you know, here it looks like there's four cars in front of this one. This is a pretty big development. It's got four cars. Up here, there's only a couple of cars. And then everywhere else, you know, it's not super packed on Smith Lane. I know it's not a really wide road.
But there's a bus stop on Smith Lane, isn't there? Is it on this end? I mean, what I'm trying to say is like we're trying to encourage infill within the city center, encourage people to live in places and use that minimum number of parking spots and not need a ton of, yeah. It seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, this is in an area, this is an area that does accommodate, you know, pedestrian activity. So, it's in the vicinity, like you point out, of the bus stop and shopping and.
Right, you can reasonably walk to something from there. Right, there's a church right there.
Yeah, yeah.
We could open for public comment if anyone has anything they'd like to say. The person who wrote the letter is not present, I guess.
No, they, I think they indicated that they would be out of town.
Right.
And I, you know, I haven't called them. I did, you see the correspondence with the city engineer on that drainage. And it makes sense. I did go out there today to kind of, it was raining. I wanted to see what the actual drainage situation was like and there wasn't any flooding today. And I noticed that the topography does go, you know, it's like I said, it slopes to the south, but with that storm drain, the DI is right in front of the site. And I know that they did upgrade it when they did the other multifamily development in the area. So, I think that his drainage situation is probably just localized and he was concerned about additional runoff, but there's not going to be any additional runoff. And I will call him and talk to him.
Yeah, and it says here on page 18, there's a 20-foot drainage easement that you guys are requiring, so.
Hi, could you state your name, please?
Tina Christensen. I live in Hydesville. I'm also with the Board of Realtors and have a project up here, but I just want to say I think this is a great project. And I attended the Board of Supervisors today and listened to Health and Human Services talk about affordable housing and, you know, the governor on his secondary units. And creating housing and infill housing, as you stated, is very, very important because that's where your services are. And, you know, this is something that is needed. I represented Travis Snyder on his properties and his dad, David Snyder, with all of the other ones. And, you know, those apartments in there are very nice. They have no problems, no issues. And if he can do something like that one on School Road, my hat's off to him because that's a beautiful, that's a beautiful apartment complex.
Is that the new one that's going on on the school in Ronerville?
Oh, my.
Really doing a good job with that, yeah.
That is, that is, you know, Travis didn't do those. That is, that is beautiful. So, my hat's off to anybody who will start a pretty affordable.
Thank you. And I think the other piece on that, I think the lot depth waiver makes a lot of sense because it does meet the, the coverage requirements are met and those ratios are met. So, the numbers are good and it, and it is an infill project. You're close to stuff, not too far from the hospital and so, yeah, it's a solid project. Okay. Do we have any, any other comments, Carrie? No? Okay.
I think it's great.
Can I entertain a motion?
A motion to, where's our title? Which page? 10, thanks. I had switched back to that other page to consult the storm drainage. Motion to adopt Resolution P. 2019-3026, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna recommending that the City Council approve a tentative map to subdivide a 1.5 acre lot into six multifamily lots ranging in size from 10,000 square feet to 13,197 square feet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And that's a roll call of the.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Chairman Rogers.
Yes. Okay. And I guess we're looking for a motion on the second part two to that.
Motion to adopt Resolution P. 2019-3027, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a conditional use permit for 36 multifamily units and a waiver of minimum tot, lot depth.
Second.
Okay. Roll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Chairman Rogers.
Yes. Okay. Moving, moving on to the second item, a public hearing to consider approval of a minor lot subdivision of 3.7 acre parcel into two lots, approximately 9,000 square feet and 150,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you, Planning Commission and Chairman Rogers. So, this subdivision, this is a minor subdivision with a lot, a developed lot and a remainder. I'm located on the south side or the, actually the corner, the nor, actually the northeast corner of Kenmore Road between Remmy Court, it's down here, and Shields Lane. And this is at the bend of Kenmore Road where it turns into Kenwood. So, Ken, Kenmore keeps going along this curve This is in a zone, this zone is residential single-family. It's in the Ronerville neighborhood and you can see that it is an area developed with single-family residences. And then there's the Nyberg Dairy across the street. I'm sure I've got another area up there. This is the tentative map. So, it's a 3.7 acre parcel and the proposal is for the remainder and then the single-family residents to be split off. And the, this is labeled as Lot 1. It's 8,901 square feet. And the remainder, the subdivision map act, in case you're wondering, does allow a parcel to be left as the remainder and it's not intended for immediate sale. It can be, you know, developed in the future and there are development plans in the works for that, but their immediate concern was to get that split off and taken care of. So, the zoning, again, is single-family. Minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. The Lot 1, both lots do meet the standards, the development standards. Again, this is almost 9,000 square feet and it does meet the setbacks in the building coverage. The own, let's see, Public Works would normally require frontage improvements for a new parcel and the only, utilities aren't required at this time for the single-family residents. Of course, it already has utilities. So, normally they might require a sidewalk, curb and gutter, but because this whole section is not developed with sidewalk, curb and gutter, it doesn't make sense to put it in for such a small strip. It's much engineering-wise and, you know, cost as well. It's much better to design it and construct it in one undertaking. So, that is deferred, the development of that is deferred until the future subdivision of the remainder parcel. And that's a condition of approval that the engineering department has proposed. General plan is residential low. This, the density doesn't really come into play here. 6.9 units per acre. Sewer cleanout for Parcel 1 will be required. That's for all, all existing, you know, discretionary permits like this and of course all new, new subdivision parcels. So, that's really, you know, it's a fairly simple subdivision. Just, I don't have anything else to say. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay.
I had just a little question and it was about sidewalks and drainage, oddly. I actually know that particular, I walk there a lot with my dog. It is a pretty wet corner. There is a lot of strain, stormwater drainage that ends up in that very corner, which is the bottom left of our picture here, I think.
Over here?
Yeah, exactly. And to the point that it's really like, it's a permanent wet, deep, sort of below-the-road grade puddle there. And I wonder, you know, as long as that's a condition of future subdivisions, I would be concerned about more runoff in that area or more traffic around that corner without those road improvements. But those are conditioned for any future.
Yeah, definitely when this larger parcel gets subdivided, it's gonna have, you know, significant street improvements.
Yeah.
Kenmore, you know, does have issues here and as well at the curve here. So, that, the storm drain, normally they pick that up, existing issues on.
Yeah, maybe I'm talking about the lower right, yeah, that curve of Kenmore. That's exact, that's the one that I'm talking about there, yeah.
Yeah, that will be an issue when that gets subdivided. Definitely be addressed.
Okay. That was my only question.
But in this case, there's, you know, there's no new development on the, on Lot 1. The remainder.
It's livestock pasture.
Yeah, a house could be constructed there. Normally, the remainder doesn't get conditioned.
Yeah. You answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, anything? Or any public comment?
Tina Christensen, this is a parcel that we've held since 2004. We have done some preliminary drawings on it, but my son was involved and my son has moved to Texas. So, that is his house. I'm trying to get him a house in Texas. That's the reason for it. We have done, we have done wetland studies on the property and. And there was a well that was never capped when we bought it. And that caused a lot of the blackberry bushes and all of that. And they've come back and re, redone since we've eliminated the well, so.
Sure.
That whole corridor there needs quality.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, some of those older roads through Runnerville are just, you know, they were made for horses and buggies and not cars.
Right. Well, that would be the reason the cows are strewn. Anyway, any other questions of me? That's, it's, we've done a lot of preliminary work to, to subdivide it later on. But now's not the time to subdivide, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. Thank you, Tina. If there are no other comments, entertain a motion.
A motion to adopt Resolution P-2019-3025. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a tentative map to subdivide a 3.7-acre parcel into Lot One of 8,901 square feet and a remainder of 151,770 square feet.
Okay, thank you. And a roll call of vote, please.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
And Chairman Rogers.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you. And I'd like to also thank Liz and Karen. They both worked with us very well on trying to figure this out and to move forward and keep going and get the past behind us. Thank you. You have a good staff and you and Gary's good.
We, we think they're amazing, too.
They do a great job. It's true, yeah. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That covers, um... That covers the business on the agenda. Do we, anything else pops up?
Um, no, the only thing that I would point out is the, if you haven't driven by the Jean-Luc Center or the McLean, that's planning to be opened this weekend. They're having their holiday craft fair. So, they, I know they've been working hard getting it ready. And that includes paving the site. So, the parking lot is significantly paved and will be somewhat striped by Saturday.
I have a meeting on, on the twelfth at 9:00 AM to go see it.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah. I don't know, Gary, do you have anything else to add? And I know that.
Moving ahead.
Amazing, mhm.
Nothing else on the radar coming up?
Um, there's one subdivision left out of, I think, about five that we've had. And that is the vacant land across from the hospital or.
Like the old Brazil Ranch?
It's to the, it's to the west of that.
Okay.
North of the abandonment.
So, it's on Redwood Way. So, about halfway up on Redwood Way, there's Springville, is it Springville Road? It's the, that goes through to Shamrock.
Yeah.
Is that Springville? So, it's that vacant land. So, part of that is being subdivided. And we've been working on that. And they've had some things come up that we, that they're working on now. So, that's the last subdivision, the last significant project. I think that's, we've been, done quite a few subdivision kind of things and.
That's going to be single-family dwellings?
Yeah. Yeah. And they did find that about a third of that whole property, or maybe a fourth to a third of it, is in wetlands. So, they've had to kind of be creative in their lot layout.
Well, we'll be looking forward to seeing it. Because being creative means that maybe the structures are closer together. But maybe then you have larger green space areas that are wetlands. So, that could be a good trade-off.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're seeing a lot of plans coming in right now, a lot of, a lot of single-family right now. Because, part of it's because of the code cycle ends this year. Brand new, new code cycles, 2019, actually, that's what they call it, but it's 2020. And there's some, some major surprises in there. You've probably heard about them, a few things, all single-family. Pretty much solar. And a lot of the energy stuff is upgraded and so on, so. A lot of guys are trying to get stuff in right now. And we're, we're getting a triplex and another duplex that's going to be submitted in and started going through approval to be there. This is the second half of it.
So, the, that's the one on Newburg Road? You guys did the subdivision just on a smaller lot?
Got the plans in right, he's been, issued the permits for the other ones. But he hasn't real ground on them. But he came walking in today and with his other side, going, okay, I'm ready to submit, so. It's going to surprise me, but it's, it's there. But they're just getting a lot of things right now. So, I'm expecting in probably another three or four houses. And I think right now, we got seven in queue, eight in queue, somewhere in there.
Like going to the courthouse two days before property taxes are due. You end up in the queue.
It is pretty cool. Everybody wants to try to beat it. They don't know what they're going to do. So, they run the last minute, the last couple of days are, it's either dead or you're pretty much at the counter because there's a line.
Awesome.
Any new businesses coming in?
Um, the remodeling on 12th Street at Newburg, across from Clendenins.
Yeah, Paul's Live. They just got, finally got the approvals from the Health Department.
Is that Paul's Live from New York is coming to Fortuna?
They, they own, they own the building. That's why, part of that, it's been opened up. They got a lot of stuff in Clinton, stuff out of there to see what was going on. So, we have a new design there. You know, put a set of double doors and move them on down. It's all going to be kind of, it's going to be cleaned up. It's going to be nice.
Good, nice.
Pretty much everything moves in there. Everything's brand-new, new bathrooms, new.
Yeah. It needed it, needed it. It was looking pretty bad in there.
As we know, the new parking lot all the way around it, there will be a five-foot landscape buffer up and around. So, we asked them if they would, so.
It'll be more defined.
Yeah, because there's too many, too many people you see driving on the curb. It's just too.
It's too dangerous right there. It's a really difficult intersection already.
Putting a buffer in there and checking it all, even with all that, putting it in there, it still fits within the back of the corner. And it's, and we still get as many parking spaces, so.
Yeah, who knows? You know, people like those areas in the summertime also. You can put seating out by little shrubberies and.
Yeah, and they're, like I said, the, the front door is being moved down, close to where the bar used to be.
That'll be exciting.
And the reason why is because they're planning down the road and taking that side area and turning outside seating.
Mhm. I can see that, yeah. That'll be neat.
Cool. Think of any other new businesses or?
Uh, hot dog joint.
Where?
Charlotte Gray. Charlotte Gray? The, no, the, there's also the craft store. The, it's like a, like a co-op of different crafters and things. And then she's got a room in the back where she is going to be doing classes for everything from cookie dating, cake, cookie decorating, paint night.
Oh.
Things like that. And then it's, she's open to the public where you can go in and, and use her craft room and her.
Very cool. Where's this going in?
It's, it's open, they did their grand opening a few weeks ago. It's downtown, next to Verizon, I think.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, with the Verizon.
Cool.
And it's going to be near where the craft, the fabric store moved.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the fabric store moved. That's nice.
Crafty haven downtown.
Sweet. That's a good, the wa, the walkable area. That's good.
Yeah, there's another boutique store. What's the name of the other boutique?
Another bistro?
No, boutique on that side of Main Street.
Yeah.
Next to the antique store.
There's a bookstore. There were two antique stores. I think one of them went out of business last year, maybe?
No, I think it's the Antique Depot, just new owners took over.
Oh, okay. CF.
No.
There's one that sells like little signage, little household things. I know they have I Love Fortuna cups.
Yeah. What's the name? Okay.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Cute.
Yeah, and cooldowns, as you've probably seen, there's no sign up.
Yeah, so we were wondering what's going on with that.
I figured that would be the spark of it. But as everybody knows, it's been closed for.
I figured they probably just lost too much during the PSBS.
Well, there was, I don't know exactly everything, but there were some personal issues that was going on. We do have a business license, original owners have reapplied for the license in there. The sign came down because of wind. Bend it and it opened up. So, I called them up real fast and we got the sign guy out there to strip the signs out of there before they lost it off the building.
That's good.
So.
So, they're reopening.
Reopen. Will reopen it as, as, as what it is, I would assume.
Yeah. Probably.
I don't know if they're going to overrun it for a bit and.
Had it been owned by somebody else in the interim?
Yeah, their chef originally.
I see. Okay. Yeah, same thing happened in Arcata once upon a time. Small-town restaurants change hands.
Yep, so.
Have renovations started on the Ford Motors Building? Have renovations started on the Ford Motors Building?
Haven't received anything on that. NorCal should be opening up real soon. NorCal Audi Body.
Yeah, it looks like they're getting ready.
And I saw all those big.
It's nice looking.
On the front.
Mhm.
Nice building.
Good views.
It's one of those things where you can take a opening of a roll-up door opening instead of putting that in there, you put storefront at.
Yeah.
We haven't seen very much of it. Ronnicky has a little bit of it, but it's, it's pretty common elsewhere. And here, we brought it in the corner and it just kind of brings back that old-school flavor where you used to put windows on the corner of buildings. And can't do it now with seismic. But on those kind of buildings, you can sure do it.
Yeah, it looks great.
Well, yay for Fortuna.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Il Valley's poppin'.
We just need several more good restaurants.
Yeah.
That would be okay.
Good job at the, the, you guys did the River Lodge the other night.
Yeah. Oh, well, thank you. Well, thank you.
I will, I will say, don't forget to go to La Costa before they have their annual family vacation of like a week because they do always close down right when I like want to go to La Costa, around New Year's. So, get it in before Christmas, folks. Merry Christmas. Motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn?
Probably not going.
For the evening?
Another one this month, right?
Right.
Make, I make a motion to adjourn for the year.
Give me a second.
I just like saying aye. That's Robert's rules of order. And any chance I get in this modern world to say aye?
Aye.
Aye and aye, it's all official. So, I'm bringing back a parasol as a symbol as well, I think.